May 5th, 2025, Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting. And appreciate each and every one of you being here tonight. Our assistant or deputy county manager will not be with us tonight. Her father is in the hospital and she went to be with him. And, you know, hopefully you'll keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we'll now go to our invocation and pledge by Commissioner Tony Kozar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will you bow with me? Gracious and loving God Almighty, we thank you so much, first of all, for another beautiful day that you've given us. And then, God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for your loving kindness and all of your tender mercies. We're so grateful, God, for the grace that you extend to us every day of our lives. And then, God, we thank you that as we live this life, we always know that through your Spirit, you're with us to guide us. So allow your Spirit to guide us through this meeting, so that all that we say and do will be pleasing to you. God, I ask tonight that we glorify you through the service that we render. I ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Any anything that needs to be taken off or added to it? If not, call for a motion to approve the agenda.
But Chairman, I'll motion that would generally stand approved as as written.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to go over the consent agenda? Is there any discussion on it? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we approved the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. And now introductions, recognitions, and presentations. And the board has a presentation tonight. Could I get all of our board members to join me out front? Long? Oops. Just to give you a little bit of background, on February 17th of this year, Karen Evans, clerk to the Board of Commissioners, became a North Carolina certified county clerk. To qualify as a North Carolina certified county clerk, a candidate must be a member of the North Carolina Association of County Clerks and must have successfully completed all of the course requirements of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Clerk Certification Institute at UNC School of Government, including completion of the institute's written examination with passing scores. The Clerk Certification Institute runs for 20 days over the course of a year and provides instructions and subjects involving the core responsibilities of municipal and county clerks. The cohort is offered in person only and meets for one week each quarter. Karen attended the 2024 Clerk Certification Institute in February, May, August, and October of 2024. The topics covered included the open meetings law, the public records law, ordinance authority and adoption, local government board procedures, agenda preparation, meeting minutes, public notices, oath of office, quasi judicial proceedings, and many others. Karen, this is a tremendous achievement and we're very proud of you and your commitment to the board and to Granville County. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Now, we have a proclamation. If I can get to the right page. We have a proclamation recognized from May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week. Whereas the role of the clerk of the Board of County Commissioners is crucial for maintaining an informed community and facilitating effective local governance through communication among citizens, governing bodies, and administrative departments. And whereas the position of clerk, one of the oldest in local government, continues to be essential as official record keepers of their counties with responsibilities that are deeply rooted in history. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 153A-111 requires every Board of County Commissioners to appoint or designate a clerk to the Board to perform any duties that may be required by law or the Board of Commissioners, including but not limited to preparation, filing, protection of local government records, which are vital for accountability and transparency. And whereas clerks enhance their professional skills through active participation in the North Carolina Association of County Clerks to Board of Commissioners, which in partnership with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Government and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks offers nationally recognized certification programs and continuous professional education. And whereas clerks, through their dedication to professional development, not only improve the efficiency of their offices, but also bring positive recognition to their counties by participating in advanced education and obtaining professional related certifications. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Granville County Board of Commissioners that May 4th through May 10th, 2025 will be recognized as Clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week in Granville County and extends its appreciation to the clerk to the Board, Karen Evans, and to all county clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the county they represent. Adopted this the 5th day of May, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Karen is vital to us. She keeps keeps all of us straight, keeps all of us going, tells us where we need to be and when we need to be there. Anyway, see, not only can we not do without Karen, Jessica put all this together. And she did it in a roundabout way to keep Karen from knowing. So that's a monumental task on its own because Karen keeps up with everything that's going on everywhere within that has anything to do with the county commissioners.
I'll say two words, a few things.
Yes.
Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much. It truly is a pleasure. I took an oath to serve at the pleasure of this board and it truly is my honor and it really is my privilege. Thank you, Jessica. I see your name on this. You had to attest it because normally it's my signature attested, but I couldn't attest it. You had to do it. So thank you and for everyone that supports me. It's been a challenge, but I want to just thank all of the administration staff, including County Manager Drew Cummings, for everyone's support as I transitioned into this role. I'm still transitioning, but I just want to appreciate everybody for their support of me.
We thank you and thank you for stepping in and stepping up and and taking on this monumental task. And we greatly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I shake your hand?
All right. That's a lot of reading for me. But we we do that. Many people think the county commissioners have control of everything, but in reality, we have three employees. We have the clerk to the board, we have the county commissioner, I mean, the county manager, and we have the attorney. They're the only three employees we have. Everybody who works for the county works for the county manager. So we don't have direct control over the day to day operations. That's the county manager's job. And we try to let him do his job and stay out of his way. Now, our next presentation is for the 2024 Dorothy R. Crawford Award to Taisha Hewitt. And we have Latoya Tassant, the DSS Director. Will you come forward and make the presentation?
Yes. It works. Okay, great. Taisha, if you can make your way up to the stage, please.
So again, my name is Latoya Tassant. I am the DSS Director here in Granville County and it is my honor and privilege here to be here recognizing this outstanding employee. I can say the last two years I've been here, she has been such an outstanding employee to work with, person to supervise and manage and lead her team with great integrity and great loyalty. So I'm so excited to present her and be here with the state also to present her this award. So I'm going to pass the mic on over to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Ms. April Black, and Ms. Misty P. Carmick Williams, as they present. Are they both are from the Department of North Carolina of Aging who will present this award to Ms. Hewitt?
Hello, my name is Misty P. Carmick Williams, and I'm with the Division of Aging at the Department of Health and Human Services with the State of North Carolina. Thirty years ago, the Division of Aging established three awards. In 2018, we decided we needed a new one, one that was created called the Dorothy R. Crawford Award to Support Older Adults Through Adult Protective Services and Guardianship. The Dorothy R. Crawford Award recognizes an individual developing innovative strategies that are related to or have had a significant impact on the lives of older adults, including through adult protective services and guardianship. The award is known for Dorothy R. Crawford, also known as Dot, who was a former County Department of Social Services Director of Macon County. She was a staunch advocate for vulnerable adults for 75 years, which is a really long time. Dot was active in her local community, her church, and with the senior Tar Heel Legislature, which nominates one individual 60 or older to represent each county before the General Assembly to share what needs you all have in each community, such as in Granville County. She was married to her husband, had two sons, and her philosophy was keep on truckin' on. She served as a model to all those who were involved in advocacy for the needs of older adults and those with mental illness and children. The person who's being nominated today exudes all of these traits. I'm going to pass on to April Black, who nominated this individual.
Hello. So it is certainly my honor to get to work with Taisha. She exemplifies innovation and dedication, and I would venture to say everything she does but for this purpose, adult protective services. There was one notable case that she coordinated a multidisciplinary team to support a 69-year-old undocumented individual who had no connections in his home country or here. She collaborated with Medicaid, social security, social services for the blind, and pro bono counsel from the Department of Justice. And those efforts resulted in that client receiving visual impairment assistance and securing safe placement after a relatively brief hospital stay. That's really unheard of to have a relatively brief hospital stay when you have that many barriers against you, but it was truly Taisha's efforts and those of the team that she pioneered and spearheaded to make that happen. Granville County Department of Social Services has also consistently demonstrated excellence in adult protective services, and their data reports show that. We meet regularly for continuous quality improvement meetings. They show that. And they also have programmatic monitorings, which all showcase excellence in practice. And I say that to say that this case is just one case that I've shared with you that represents hundreds of humans similar to this case who have received quality support and services because of the care that Taisha gives those that she serves. Additionally, Granville County partners with the Area Council on Aging to host a World Elder Abuse Awareness event annually. This event offers a full day of food, fun, and resources to local seniors. Taisha has shared her expertise statewide. Across the state, we have a listserv where folks will reach out, looking for assistance, looking for help. And Taisha is always one of the first to respond with help for other supervisors across the state of North Carolina who are also serving vulnerable adults. Taisha's outstanding work makes her a very deserving candidate for this award, and we're so happy to be here to present it to her today.
I just want to say it is a privilege for me to serve in this capacity. This is my hometown. This is where I'm from, and I wouldn't dare think about serving anywhere else. Thank you, guys.
If her family is here, if we can have, it's our husband and your two girls, if you come and take a picture, please. Two, three girls. Three girls, I'm sorry, three. And she does all this hard work with this adorable and beautiful family as well. So she she does it all.
And our next item is a presentation by Sheriff Robert Fountain.
First, giving honor to God, the author and finisher of everything that we are. I bring you greetings from the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office. A few months ago, I said Buncombe. A few months ago, Hurricane Helene struck Asheville in the western part of our state. And because of the efforts of Granville County Sheriff's Office, members of this community, ACIM, emergency management, Board of Commissioners, we were recognized at the Sheriff's Association for the efforts that we put in place to assist the western part of North Carolina. We had deputies stay out there for an extended amount of time to provide law enforcement services to them. So at the past Sheriff's Association Conference in Wilmington this past week, we were given a plaque that will be placed at the sheriff's office. Every one of you will receive a copy of what they sent us. And there will be a Granville County, not the sheriff's office, logo affixed to the torn and battered flag, the United States flag that flew over their sheriff's office. Our symbol for our county will be affixed to the plaque once they present it to the community, which we did for them. And if you don't mind to indulge me, 10/25/2024 to the Granville County Sheriff's Office, Dear Sheriff Fountain, the strength of our first responder community and beyond has never been clearer than in the moments in great need. I want to take a moment to express our deepest and most heartfelt thanks to the dozens of agencies that came together, not just our local area, but from all over the United States. Your agency's selfless dedication were felt at the very moment we worked side by side without a single day off to ensure the safety of our community. You brought manpower, boats, equipment, helicopters. We didn't do all this. Even cooked meals to sustain during long, exhausting hours. Each contribution, no matter from what form, was a vital piece of our mission. You came from near and far, showing us that in a time of crisis, we are not just neighbors, we're your united force. Your actions have expanded our community of we. Beyond anything I could ever have imagined, what we have began here has grown with the bonds of service and compassion stretching across this state's lines. Together, we are proving that our strength lies not just in the work of what we do individually, but how we come together when it matters the most. To every agency, officer, deputy, detention officer, trooper, and individual who lent helping hands and hearts, thank you. Your service goes beyond words. You reminded us of what it means to stand together. To you, strengthen the bond, and you strengthen the bond that we all share in this line of work. I'm deeply honored to serve alongside you. We are forever grateful for answering the unwavering commitment to our community. We cannot have done this without you. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Sincerely, Quentin Miller, Buncombe County Sheriff. So this is for the entire community, not just the sheriff's office. And I thought it fitting to show you guys what we're doing, not just to help people around here, but around this community in our state. So this is for the county of Granville, not just for the sheriff's office. So I made a copy of his remarks to the board. If you don't mind, I'll approach Commissioner, sir.
So we will fix that to the hall in the lobby, so the staff, members of the community, whenever they come through, they will be able to see some of the stuff that we are doing to keep our state. And when FEMA didn't do what they're supposed to, and I'm not bashing FEMA, the sheriffs told them, get out the way we got. So that's what we did. A lot of sheriffs didn't go. They didn't go and take their time. They may upset people, but we went. I think we took about four trips, chief, to deliver stuff that this community donated to those in need. So from Chimney Rock to Asheville to all over that affected part of the community up there, we served. And I just want to say thank you, the board, for allowing us to serve those in need at that time. Any questions for me? Everybody saw it? Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, if I can get a challenge going, I'm going to talk to the sheriff because I got to see him tomorrow at the Peace Officers Memorial. Peace Officers Memorial is tomorrow in Catawba. So we leaving in the morning to go to do that. If I can grab y'all a challenge coin, I'll get it for the commissioners. I can't get a lot of them. I promise I'll get one for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. All right. Next item of business is public comments. And Patrick Moore, if you will, please come forward. And if you will, state your name and address for the record. And you then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, and good evening, board member. My name is Patrick Moore. Let's start over with you. There you go. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can y'all hear me? My name is Patrick Moore, and I live at 792 Condon Drive in Charleston, South Carolina. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. I am here on behalf of Energy Re, which is a renewable energy company that builds solar projects around the southeast. Energy Re has agreements with five Granville County landowners totaling 730 acres that will eventually generate 80 megawatts of electricity. We are not on the agenda tonight, obviously, but do anticipate seeking zoning approval in the next year or so. And I just wanted to come and introduce myself, put a face with the project. If you were able to attend the NC State Charette on March 6th, they had some slides of this project up on in their presentation, and you might have wondered a little bit about it. We've been getting some questions. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself. You'll be getting an email, a voicemail from me. So when you get an email from Patrick Moore, that's me. And we would like to invite you to engage in the project, right? We find that these projects are the most successful. We got really specific feedback from the commissioners and the public. We've met with the staff, and we've heard from the staff and a number of the members of the public that previous projects, previous companies have not done a great job with public engagement. And so we wanted to come and just kind of declare it a new day of transparency and coordination when it comes to these projects and offer to meet with all of you individually, collectively, or any members of the public. I've got maps, if you want them, and cards, and I'm sitting right here on the third row. If you have a minute, please stop by after the meeting and introduce yourself. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And for a moment there, I was afraid one of Rob's neighbors from his vacation house is up here complaining about something. Now, our big order of business tonight is our manager's recommended fiscal year '25, '26 budget. Mr. Drew Cummings.
Good evening to you commissioners and to members of the public in the audience tonight or watching online. This will be my third budget with Granville County, and it gives me great pleasure to present you a no tax rate increase budget that through a great deal of serious and difficult work, optimizes the use of existing revenue streams to still meet a great many of our organizational and community needs. I want to thank all the staff who have helped with this specific presentation, especially Karina Weichel and David Scheck Snyder, but also our key finance staff, Jennifer Baird and Lindsay Davidson, and all the department heads and other staff who have helped assemble and support the numbers you will see tonight and in your budget books. Our agenda tonight will begin with a recap of this year's budget, as well as the big rocks your staff have been moving this year. I will review the timeline we have followed and will be following for the development and final approval of this budget. And then there's the financial backdrop of key needs and issues driving the proposed budget. I will highlight key aspects included in the budget and wrap up by boiling this budget proposal down to its essential components for all to see. The current fiscal year budget totals roughly $87.25 million, with a tax rate that was adjusted downward to 63 cents per hundred valuation after last year's revaluation process. In this year's budget, we kept the fire tax steady after the revale at 6 cents per hundred valuation, producing a little over $3.3 million for fire protection. In the current year, the Granville County Commissioners approved nearly $2 million in additional funding for Granville County public schools, some for operating expenses, but the majority to help the school system with much needed funding for capital maintenance and upgrades. Fiscal '24, '25 was also the first year for a new $400,000 a year capital commitment to Vance Granville Community College, a commitment which will provide a steady source of to Vance Granville Community College, a commitment which will provide a steady source of funding to meet Granville County's obligations to this important institution. Fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five was the second year we added a percent to our employee 401K match offering, an area where our benefits package had lagged significantly behind our competitors, and I hope we can continue that movement in next year's budget, potentially with a two percent jump to the overall goal of a five percent match rate for non-law enforcement employees. While we did a significant cost of living, uh, adjustment last fiscal year, we were not able to do one this year. And so the three percent pay bump a typical employee might have gotten from our merit pool barely would have kept, barely would have kept them ahead of inflation. It's quite difficult to say anything with certainty about our economy right now, and as we head into next year. Interest rates are still high, but dropping at least a little, along with inflation. We'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that trade conflicts and significant federal cuts do not materialize. I will say that one nice thing about interest rates being relatively high is that they do help us bring in more interest income on the county's invested funds. Despite the fluctuations in our economy, it does appear that our projections for our major revenue sources outside of the property tax have been fairly accurate, which is helpful. More on that later, but many thanks, uh, to our finance department and management analyst David Scheck Snyder for that improved tracking and prediction. Though most of the federally funded broadband expansion work has been underway for some time now, your staff, led by Karina Wykel, continue to track progress as well as any new opportunities to extend the number of new high-speed internet connections in Granville County. In fact, just last week, we received notice of an additional project award for the states from the states completing access to broadband program. This new award of over three million dollars will provide two thousand one hundred and sixty-four additional homes and businesses with access to high-speed internet. All told, by actively participating in these broadband expansion grant processes, Granville County, with minimal local investment, has leveraged over eight thousand four hundred new high-speed internet connections across the county. Finally, we have strengthened our finance department staffing, and through new leadership and focus, we have improved our operations in many different ways. We are in the final phase of implementation to offer electronic payment to our vendors. We have streamlined our credit card system into a single program, consolidated all of our county bank accounts into one financial institution, and nearly all of our deposits are now being made remotely, which saves staff time and improves safety. And I'll pause there just for a second to say that, um, Finance Director Jennifer Baird has been here barely more than a year, and all of that has happened in the past year, it's been great, she's, she's been working really hard. This year, we have hired strong new directors in cooperative extension, economic development, and animal control, and already we're seeing signs of the strength and creativity these new directors are bringing to their work in the county. We've also continued to work diligently to move forward our long-term capital planning. In the past several months, we have finalized the creation of a new capital reserve fund through which all capital funding will eventually pass. We have created a new capital project for the future Holly Recreation Site and funded it with an initial two million to pay for demolition, design, and possible additional land acquisition. We've also issued a request for qualifications for a space needs analysis and the development of a master plan that will help guide the county's future infrastructure decisions for years to come. Finally, it gives me great pleasure to observe that construction of the North Granville Senior Center is nearly complete, and I look forward to joining Commissioners in Stovall before too long to christen our newest and much-needed county facility. Overall, county staff have been extremely busy this year and have achieved a remarkable number of key milestones for the county. I'm proud of them and the progress we have made together. Now, moving on to this year's budget. The full development of each year's budget takes nearly a half-year's worth of work. Budget-related uncertainty last year, even relatively close to budget adoption, led us this year to back up our budget development process by several additional weeks. That additional time and a strong and expanded finance team have helped us to be better prepared at an earlier date than in prior years. Earnest work on departmental budgets begins in January, and each department and agency budget is gone over in detail with finance and administration during February and March. At the February Board Retreat and over the course of the next two months, staff and I also do significant engagement with you, the county commissioners, to further assess your priorities for the following year's budget. I believe the budget presented tonight is the budget the county needs and is the budget that commissioners directly and indirectly have indicated they desire. That said, it's not possible in a ninety million dollar a year organization to get all of the details just right, and I know that commissioners and members of the public will have many questions and ideas relating to this proposed budget. To discuss and answer those questions, we have three full-day budget work sessions scheduled next week, and also a public hearing two weeks from tonight, where members of the public can comment on the proposed budget. June second, four weeks from tonight, is the date we are targeting for adoption of the final budget for next fiscal year. Okay, moving on to the backdrop for the coming year's budget. There were several key factors integral to the creation of this year's budget. First of all, commissioners were very clear that they wanted a recommended budget without a tax rate increase, as such, and to create a little flexibility in what new initiatives could be proposed and funded. All departments were asked to provide a five percent cut in their operational budget, and nearly all of them achieved that goal. As noted before, we find ourselves in a decent but uncertain economy, and throughout the county, we are contending with the double-edged swords of development pressure and population growth. Unassigned fund balance grew at the end of last fiscal year primarily due to careful monitoring of spending. We finished last year at thirty-three point six percent of our general fund budget, which is much closer to our fund balance target of thirty-five percent than we have been in some time. Happily, and through continued careful monitoring of budgets and spending, fund balance is expected to grow again at the end of this year, this fiscal year as well. This is a new chart, uh, staff have prepared to show our mix of large revenue sources over time, with the largest single source being our property tax, followed by sales tax. The red, it's now blue, my notes say red, but, uh, the, the blue line, um, along the top is fund balance usage. Local governments often use fund balance as the final balancing revenue in a budget where we know we won't spend every dollar anyway. In other words, we budget it, but we do not expect to spend it. Outside of the property tax, which we control and which is a very stable revenue source, sales taxes are the next largest revenue source for the county. They do continue to grow, as shown by the blue bars, but the growth rate shown in the orange line has been declining for several years now. With modest growth this year and with the possibility of impacts from trade-related conflict and federal spending cuts on our local economy, we think it prudent to flat-budget sales tax for next fiscal year. We can hope for some growth, but as a wise person once said, "Hope is not a strategy", so we will budget conservatively and hope for the best. Overall, on the operational side, department cuts, saving in construction administration, the lack of any new requests related to our EMS system, natural growth, and the use of five hundred thousand in fund balance have created approximately two point six million for new general fund expenditures, most of which I will propose to spend on our current employees. On the capital side, reductions in existing debt service, as well as the two cents dedicated last year to capital, are the primary funding sources for our additional capital commitments to the schools, Vance Granville Community College, and a small number of county projects. On the expenditure side, a number of key needs are driving our strategy this year. First, we must maintain stable county operations, which means we need to maintain sufficient staff and adequate facilities needed to provide programs and services, many of which are mandated by state statute. As a major part of maintaining stable operations, we must continue to compete to recruit and retain talent. If we lose twenty or thirty percent of our staff in a given area in a given year, the remaining staff burn out even more quickly and will soon be looking for ways to exit. And in this job market, with unemployment at historic lows, there are always ways to exit. An additional driver is the fact that Granville County must provide adequate public safety across five hundred and thirty-two square miles. In Granville County, we pride ourselves on self-sufficiency, but when someone's loved one is having a heart attack, they do not want to hear that there are not enough ambulances to get to their part of the county quickly. Moving along, the county is required by statute to provide sufficient funds for over eight thousand five hundred schoolchildren. As with county employees, if we don't pay enough to hire and retain good teachers, we won't even have warm bodies, never mind talented teachers, to make sure that the next generations of Granvillians can succeed. I want to congratulate Superintendent Winborn on having had very few teaching vacancies this year, an outcome I attribute directly to his creative strategies to expand the pool of well-qualified teachers. And even if we're not building new schools, we have to support the maintenance of nearly a million square feet of school space that our students are currently learning in. The county is on the hook for all of that, and the same is largely true for Vance Granville Community College, the college destination of the largest percentage of our high school graduates. Granville County pays for twenty-five percent of the main campus facility expenses and a hundred percent of the south campus expenses, and it adds up. Finally, developing and funding and implementing a plan to meet our community's longer-term capital needs is also an important part of this capital, this proposed budget. Now I'd like to do a bit of a deeper dive into employee pay and benefits, both of which are key drivers for this budget. A decent retirement plan is an important part of any employer's retirement package, and a 401K plan is an important part of that. When I arrived in Granville County, we made a multi-year commitment to bring our 401K matching program up to the industry standard of five percent. This year, we're at three percent, and we have the ability in next year's budget to make the final leap of two percentage points to the desired five percent. In addition to the proposed increase in 401K match, I'm also proposing our normal four percent merit pool. As the leader of an organization filled with many wonderful, hard-working people, it's extremely important to me to reward employees who distinguish themselves with exemplary service to the community. Especially after a year without a cost of living adjustment, I am also pleased to propose a two percent cost of living adjustment this coming year to help employees keep up with inflation. Employee pay and benefits were ranked as the commissioner's top priority for this coming budget. I know that county employees are grateful for that vote of confidence, and I hope these elements of the proposed budget will remain in the budget adopted in June. This chart will help you understand a little about what has happened with employee pay over the past six years. Implementation of the twenty nineteen pay study, in the most basic sense, caught us up to inflation that happened before twenty nineteen. Inflation since twenty nineteen has totaled roughly twenty-six percent. Our COLAs have only covered about a third of that, which means merit raises have not helped many long-serving employees get ahead, as it were, but merely helped them keep on par with the cost of living. Some employees in public safety and social services did benefit from additional targeted pay adjustments commissioners approved in the last few years. That said, however, there are many county employees not in those categories who are not really making much more today in real terms than they were six years ago. I am happy to note only a very minor increase in our health plan costs, a far smaller increase than the seventeen percent, uh, we experienced going into the current year. Much lower claims thus far this year have certainly helped, and we continue to be pleased with the variety of new programs and other improvements our insurance broker is able to provide our employees, as these programs play a significant role in employing, uh, improving employee health, and thus in reducing claims. It's still worth pointing out, as I did last year, that it currently costs over nine thousand dollars a year for an employee at Granville County to cover a spouse and children, under our current plan. This is a cost I believe we will need to continue to chip away at in future years to become a truly attractive employer for workers with families. Moving on to another important element in the proposed budget, this slide simply shows the increasing revenue going to fire protection over the past several years and with the institution of the fire tax. The fire tax rate, just like the overall county tax rate, is proposed to stay flat next fiscal year at six cents per hundred valuation. Through this fire tax, all our volunteer fire departments are now drawing down two to three, or even four times the revenue available to them just three years ago. The higher brown bars in this chart reflect additional, more limited payments to municipal fire departments, which receive some limited support from the fire tax for their mutual aid responses out into unincorporated areas. Enhancement funding is the largest portion of funding many departments get, but the allocations vary widely because they are based on area served, call volume, tax value, population, and a number of other variables. Over time, this methodology will enable departments shouldering a heavier and steadier load to pay for the additional staffing and equipment necessary to carry that load on our residents' behalf. There have been a lot of important achievements this year in fire protection and the administration of the fire tax. Most of our volunteer fire departments have substantial weekday coverage now with paid firefighters, and the improvements in response times continue to bear out the wisdom and importance of this strategy. This year, every volunteer fire department in Granville County had a financial procedures review for the first time with an independent financial services agency. Those results, paired with some expert budgeting assistance for departments, have resulted in our having a much better understanding of the financial situation of each of our volunteer fire departments. Finally, the fund balance within the fire tax fund does continue to grow and help the county prepare for additional stations and equipment and other needs down the road. I think this is a wise approach, because those costs will be significant. Our health system, including EMS, is another public safety function critical to this year's budget. Granville County is fortunate to have a healthy local hospital, and we are one of a shrinking handful of communities in North Carolina that still has such an institution. We are doubly fortunate that Granville Health System agreed a number of years ago to operate Granville County's EMS system, and we are also fortunate that they are able to help support this operation financially. Were Granville County to have to operate this system on our own again, we would be looking at significantly higher numbers than those up on the screen. In addition to the significant increases in operational funding over the past several years, the county continues to invest in an expanded, um, fleet of ambulances. Without these enhancements and considering the growth in our population, response times would continue to get longer and longer. As you can see, the county's financial support of EMS has grown significantly over past years. After adding funding in the current year for an additional ambulance and crew for our system, it is helpful that there are no additional requests from our EMS system for next fiscal year. And now, an ever-present and incredibly important part of this annual conversation, which is the Board of County Commissioners' support for education. Before I talk through this slide, I'd like to touch on the different elements covered in this chart. The vertical bars here represent the total number of students from Granville County enrolled either in the traditional public schools, shown in dark green, or in public charters, shown in lighter green. The red line is current expense allocations from the county to this combined group of students. And finally, what that works out to on a per pupil basis is noted along the bottom of each column. This chart notwithstanding, K-12 education in the state of North Carolina is largely state-funded. Typically, state funding makes up about sixty percent of school funding, federal funding about ten percent, with local and other funds making up the remaining thirty percent. As you also know, the state has not been terribly generous with teacher pay, lottery fund distributions, recognition of advanced degrees, and other important aspects of school finance. Over many Granville, over many years, Granville County Commissioners have provided substantial additional funding for the schools to help make up for inadequate state support. I would also note that a substantial and growing portion of the funding reflected here is transferred on a per pupil basis to charter schools attended by Granville County students. As you can see in this table, the total number of school-aged students- the total number of school-aged students enrolled in traditional public schools and charters has remained fairly steady over the past five years. County funding, however, has increased regularly each year by an average of roughly 3/4 of $1 million. My recommended budget for next fiscal year includes an increase in current expense funding of nearly $400,000, which was the school's full request for next year. As debt service on school buildings has begun to taper off, the county has substantially increased the capital funding available to maintain existing facilities. As you can see on the top line, that funding will have more than doubled over two years. It may be relevant to note that some of the $3.25 million shown in the upper right box may end up being used as debt service so the schools can get more funding upfront so they can quickly address a variety of critical capital needs. Putting all these things together, and beyond the debt service on school buildings that the county is fully obligated to cover each year, the annual appropriations for operations, capital enhancements, and our SRO program continue to climb significantly each year. If debt service were included in this chart, the total annual expenditure proposed for next fiscal year would be over $27 million, a little less than a third of our entire budget. I point this out not because I think it's inappropriate, but rather to demonstrate the strong and ongoing commitment of county commissioners to our schools. I know that school resource officers continue to be a much discussed topic in our community, though my recommended budget does not propose an increase in the number of county-funded SROs. As a whole county community, we have gotten much closer this year to having an SRO in every school. Along with the SROs provided by the Sheriff's Office, next year, both Butler and Oxford will provide an SRO, Oxford for the first time, and the city of Creedmoor will provide three. I'm thankful to Sheriff Fountain for making sure that the staff identified to serve this critical function in schools receive appropriate training and are present in those schools every day. In this recommended budget, we continue to meet our obligations to Vance Granville Community College. This includes meeting the full facility operations request for both campuses in which we have a stake, which is 25% of the main campus needs and 100% of the south campus needs. Deferred capital needs at the main campus continue to grow, and as of today, those deferred and ever-more urgent needs total approximately $7.4 million. 25% of that amount, approximately $1.8 million, will be ours to cover eventually, but the remainder would fall on Vance County. For a number of years, Vance County has been unable to fund any portion of this request, though I believe next year they will fund at least some of the most urgent items. For our part, Granville County has begun budgeting an additional $400,000 a year for Vance Granville's capital needs, which we believe will be sufficient for us to meet our obligations over time. Beyond the pay and benefit improvements and education-related changes, which I have already described, I'd like to touch on a few other key aspects of this proposed budget. We are always looking at new staffing needs, redundancies, and other ways to optimize our county staffing. This coming year, those position changes will roughly be awash with only a fractional addition to our overall FTE count. I've also included in this proposed budget funding for some additional part-time staffing to help with fire commission work and administration of the fire district tax fund. There are a few notable fee changes in the proposed budget, which I've noted here. Once again, we have small incremental increases to our solid waste and stormwater fees. Both of these funds operate as enterprise funds, where the funds collected must be sufficient to cover the cost of program activities. With both of these funds, the step increases for next year are part of a multi-year plan to make sure these funds stay solvent and are able to pay for the activities they are intended to cover. Additionally, our fee structure for facility rentals at the Gap and the Expo have changed slightly to reflect increased maintenance and cleaning costs primarily. In light of significantly expanded demands on the Elections Department, I am recommending increasing both their personnel and operating budgets. There's over $100,000 more for staffing in the recommended Elections Budget for next year and over $70,000 for additional operational needs that have become more obvious and more pressing this past year. Social Services has also seen some unavoidable additions to their budget. Some additional staffing costs have had to be added to next year's budget, and additional funding has also been required by the state for anticipated foster care costs. There are simply a larger and larger group of Granville County children that our Department of Social Services must provide for. And as you have heard many times, the availability of outside providers able to provide the necessary and often very high level of care required is extremely limited and the cost very high. The final $92,360 isn't new funding at all, but simply funding that is being shifted from other budgets to the DSS budget so we can further increase our state reimbursement for eligible expenses. What this means is that, starting next year, we should get at least half of that funding back. We're putting in just under $20,000 for a new generator at our backup 911 center, probably a wise expenditure, given that the existing generator caught fire earlier this year. I'm also proposing $40,000 for a comprehensive pay and classification study to be conducted next year to help guide future adjustments to employee compensation. And earlier this year, we did a thorough review of cleaning services throughout the county, which previously was a mashup of part-time staff, temporary workers, and ad hoc contracts for certain buildings. After a competitive RFP, we're expecting to have a much higher and more consistent level of cleaning across all county facilities, including the courthouse, and overall costs will only increase slightly. As briefly noted earlier, one of the ways we found new revenue for some of next year's needs was through 5% operational cuts requested of every department. And I want to say again that I greatly appreciate the difficult decisions that went into formulating those cuts in most departments. In consultation with the county commissioners, I'm also proposing several modifications to the Sheriff's Office budget. First, in the current year, we experienced unplanned and unbudgeted spikes in a number of areas of the Sheriff's Budget. We looked at these very carefully with the sheriff's staff, and we agree with the sheriff that he has little or no control over these particular lines and should not have to pull from other areas of his budget if costs were to spike again. As a result, an additional reserve of nearly $200,000 is being created in the county's contingency for any new or continuing overages in those areas. Additionally, in careful consultation with county commissioners and based on unpredictability of expenditures with the potential for pressing unbudgeted needs, such as we face this year, this proposed budget would also reserve 5% of the sheriff's total budget in contingency for unanticipated needs. This proposal has no impact on the county's commitment to continue supporting current operations and staffing levels in the Sheriff's Office. In this proposed budget, our outside agency partners are generally held flat with a few exceptions. Granville Vance Public Health would receive an additional $50,000. This is made up of a recurring $25,000 increase to their annual allocation and a one-time $25,000 allocation to help upgrade their electronic medical records system. Every year, I'm happy to remind everyone within the sound of my voice that what we pay into our public health district is a fraction of what we would be paying if we were supporting our own in-house public health department in Granville County. I also want to appreciate Health Director Lisa Harrison's uncanny ability to secure grants and other outside funding to help provide the needed array of services in our county. Unfortunately, a fair number of those grants are at risk, given federal cuts already enacted or being discussed at this time. We have also added significant new funding for our courthouse to improve the function and appearance of this landmark facility until we are able to move forward with a more comprehensive set of renovations and expansions. Finally, I'm proposing a small increase in the county's annual funding for Oxford-Henderson Airport Authority to help improve their ability to contribute to our economic development, and a small increase as well for the Tar River Land Conservancy, our most active partner in preserving open space and critical natural areas. Funding for CARTS, our transportation partner, will remain at close to historic levels, and we certainly appreciate Director Randy Cantor's continued efforts to both streamline the agency's operations and also to be looking for ways CARTS can expand its services and the positive impact it can have on our community. This year, a number of very general concepts for additions to CARTS funding and operations have been floated. None were quite ready for primetime in this year's budget, but I've encouraged those thinking about them to continue to put pen to paper to flesh out how these new services would work and benefit our communities and the benefit our communities could expect, given any new investment we might make. In addition to the county's direct allocation to CARTS, state funds also pass through the county on their way to CARTS, though this may well be the last year that happens, as in the future, these funds may go directly to CARTS. I want to be clear that there are great many proposed additions to our budget that I'm not able to recommend funding for. By starting with the primary commitment to do right by our employees, there was a severely limited pot of funding remaining for new proposals. Within the context of a no-tax-rate-increase budget, I am not able to recommend funding for the vast majority of over $7 million in new requests we received from departments and partner agencies. On this slide, you can see a partial list of desirable projects we simply do not have the revenue to support, as sensible and desirable as many of them may be. And now, on to our final budget summary. Every year's budget is a weighty document for commissioners and the community. We ask a lot of our taxpayers, and it makes sense that they would expect a great deal from us in return. Doing the public's business is difficult work, but we take it extremely seriously and try to do the very best job we can. Across all the work of 27 departments, we don't always get every detail right, but when mistakes are pointed out, we work hard to create an environment where those same mistakes aren't made again. We talk every week and every month, all year long, about the community's needs, about how to ensure that Granville County remains a healthy, thriving community by making use of the levers available to county government. It isn't easy. Overall, I'm pleased to be able to propose this streamlined and strategic budget, which achieves a number of important goals for the organization and the community without any increase to either the county tax rate or fire tax rate. Anyone concerned about or interested in this budget will be warmly welcomed at our work sessions next week or to the public hearing on the budget, which takes place on May 19. They are welcome to talk to their commissioners, and many of them do. They are also welcome to contact me directly. And that's it. Thank you. I appreciate the time all of you have given me this evening. I want to reiterate my thanks for the departments whose hard work we benefit from every day and who spent many hours studying their needs and ways to reduce their budgets. I deeply appreciate Deputy County Manager Karina Wykels' efforts to organize the chaos and make sure all the little parts add up to a coherent whole. I appreciate our finance team, led by Finance Director Jennifer Baird, who work tirelessly every day and especially during budget season to make sure all the numbers add up and are properly situated. I appreciate Management Analyst David Scheck Snyder's research and counsel and visualization work that contributed greatly to our work and to this presentation. And I appreciate Clerk to the Board Karen Evans, Deputy Clerk Jessica Todd, and Audrey Hill as well for pitching in with production and other generous and helpful acts pretty much on an hourly basis over these past weeks and months. There is additional information on this slide about the budget work sessions, the public hearing, and the tentative date for budget adoption. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, that concludes my presentation of the fiscal year 2026 budget. Thank you so much.
And thank you, County Manager Cummins. Are you recommending we set the public hearing for May 19?
I am, and...
And I think we need to officially set the dates for the budget work sessions as well? Is that correct? Or just the public hearing? Okay. Yes, that is my recommendation.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve setting the budget hearing for 7:00 PM on May 19?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we set the public hearing on the proposed budget for May 19.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second in two places. Any questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. And now, our next item of business is appointments. And to make appointments and reappointments to the Granville County Board of Adjustments, we have three vacancies. John Frank, District 6, resigned April of 2025. The District 6 seat is vacant with an expired term expiring in April 27. And District 7 seat is vacant with an expired term expiring in April 27. The alternate seat is vacant with an expired term expiring in April of 2026. District 4, do you have... I'm sorry. District... District 6. Do you have an appointment?
Mr. Chairman, after talking to Mr. Frank, John has said that he would be more than willing to be the alternate, since he's already a sworn and educated member of the Board of Adjustments, as long as he gets a day's notice when they're going to have an absentee that he needs to fill in for. So with that, I would recommend that we utilize Mr. Frank as the alternate moving forward.
Okay. All right, we have...
Attorney has a question.
I'm sorry, was... Did you say that he would come to the meetings when there was going to be an absence?
Yes, sir. So he's already... He was a... He resigned from the Board of Adjustments, but did not realize there was an alternate position available there was an alternate position available and that he would be willing to serve when needed. Is there PRN availability on that?
Well, typically, they need to be there at every meeting in my experience, because you never can tell when somebody's not going to show up, and it's pretty crucial that you have a quorum to vote on that type of thing.
Then I'll hold. I was under the impression that people would actually...
That's certainly for the board to decide, but I've never seen a situation where they generally didn't show up at the meetings.
Okay. So I'll hold that then.
And we can discuss that with Barry, but that's, again, it's the board's decision, but I think it could be an issue.
Be happy to hold that.
Okay. And we'll put a hold on the District 6 position also?
Yes, sir, please.
Yeah. And we'll have to put a hold on District 7, because I don't have anything for that position either. Thank you. Now, let me get on the right page here. And now, the Granville County Citizens Advisory Committee for Environmental Affairs, we have a vacant seat on District 4 with an expired term expiring in January 27. District 4, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move for the appointment of Dr. Harvey Spur.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, ayes have it, motion carries. The District 7 seat is vacant with an expired term expiring in January 2027, and I'd like to put forward Mr. Chris Mackey for that position.
Second.
If it had been moved and proposed, I'd second that. Mr. Chris Mackey.
Mackey.
Be appointed to District 7 seat. Are there any questions? All in favor, you go ahead and sign aye.
Aye.
And thank you. Appreciate it. And the Tourism Development Authority and the Granville County, the Granville Chamber of Commerce Seton Tourism Development Authority Board is currently filled on an interim basis by, and the unexpired term runs through October 2027. Okay, there's... Okay. So I've been informed, thank you, thank you, Karen. There's no vote needed on the interim filling in. And the City of Oxford's appointment to the TDA Board remains vacant with an expired term ending in October 2027. And on Tuesday, April 15th, the Oxford Board of Commissioners unanimously appointed the city's events coordinator to serve as interim member of the Granville County Tourism Development Authority for a new three-year term. What is the pleasure of the board?
What's the person's name?
Brienne Elliott.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ms. Brienne Elliott to the Tourism Development Authority from the City of Oxford.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, ayes have it, motion carries. And, yeah. Okay. And we have a vacant Executive Director of Granville, excuse me, we have a, our Economic Development Director seat is vacant on the Granville Tourism Board, and we need to appoint our new Executive Director, Charlotte Duncan, to this position.
Chairman, I offer a motion that Ms. Charlotte Duncan be appointed to this position, vacant as Economic Development Director.
Thank you. We have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
We have a second in about three places. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed likewise, ayes have it, motion carries. And now, our next item of business, if I can find my place, got too many papers here. I lost my, lost my point. Okay, County Managers report.
I think I've talked enough this evening. I have nothing further for you. Thank you.
Oh, come on, Drew. I thought you had about 10 minutes left, didn't you? All right, County Attorney, do you have anything for us?
Drew talked enough for me, too.
Okay.
I've got, I've got a couple of things for executive session for attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Thank you. And presentation by board members, Commissioner Cozart.
Mr. Chairman, just like to say how proud I am of our clerk. It seems like I've almost seen her grow up, being right here in Oxford, and it just warms your heart when you see one of your own go forth and do well, and so very proud of you, Ms. Karen. And the same almost, also could be true for Taisha, just so proud of the work she's doing at Social Services. I also want to say that yesterday I had the opportunity to go to the installation service of a new pastor at Oak Grove Baptist Church, had a wonderful service there. I've extended an invitation for him to come and do the invocation for me at some point so everyone can get to meet him. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Privilege to go to the CTE signing for Granville County Public Schools, pretty, pretty significant event. Local, our students actually signing up to work here in the county, so it's a pretty significant. Wilton Elementary Leadership, I'll say it, I just, I don't run Granville County Public Schools, so, but I would strongly recommend that they take that curriculum on countywide. It is incredible what they're doing there at Wilton Elementary. You know, we can't, we can't get bogged down with what's going on in the federal state right now. We've got to focus on what's going on in Granville County and appreciate the direction for the county manager in regards to how he's being prudent about that and focus on what we're able to do in that regard, but understanding that it does, it will, there will be some significant impacts depending on how that, that weighs out. And I look forward to discussing the budget with other commissioners when we have our time, particularly regarding the SRO funding and that, that commitment that I'd like to see, two additional SROs in that, in that regard. So I understand it's not recommended, understand that county manager, but that would give us one at every school. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Karen.
I, too, would like to echo Commissioner May's comments about the CTE event that was hosted here. A few of the commissioners attended that. You see sometimes in the newspaper where these kids will sign with this school or that school to play ball in this sport or that sport, but it's very rare that you see someone getting, in fact, it's never happened until now that I know of in Granville County anyways, where someone's getting an internship or an apprenticeship program with an industry and moving forward in their career path. It was a great event. I think it's a, the traditional public schools need to embrace the fact that they've got a much better leverage on career path development than the charters. I know that the charters have become the elephant in the room, so to speak, around, you know, college prep and those type of things, but work is where it's at. You know, a lot of people go to college and earn a worthless degree, self-included, and wind up floundering for years until they actually get a real job, job, and these kids are signing on as they're graduating to further their careers, and I think that's, that's something that needs to be commended. Also want to commend the Town of Butner for their Butner Performance Stage opening at gazebo park on the 25th. I didn't realize it was going to be quite such a rocket event, you know, once we got done with all the political ribbon cuttings and whatnot, but I'm very excited for Butner to have that. You know, I hope that they're able to parlay that into a bunch more monthly summertime events. It's a great space, good focal point for the community, and I think that they'll benefit as a, as a town and as our community if that type of event continues forward. So appreciate the manager's budget presentation tonight and look forward to the budget workshops that are to come. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Karen. Commissioner Jay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say congratulations to Karen and also all the clerks. They have a hard time. They have a great, great responsibility keeping up with seven different minds at seven different places where each one of us should be, and they make sure, really, they make sure that you had that spot, place that you're supposed to be at. They do, they do that. And keep it up with, and we said thank you. And also like to say to my cousin Taisha, y'all know she was my kinfolk, didn't you? All right. Congratulations on her. And also, I'd like to thank the county manager for, for the, for the budget. You didn't make that hour, I was waiting an hour.
I actually cut 20 minutes off of last year's presentation. I felt pretty good about that, and I'm aiming even shorter next year.
Okay. Also, just like to say, this is military, everyone, everyone that have served in military service, from the bottom of my heart, I said thank you. And we appreciate you serving. If you didn't get it from anyone else, you got it from Granville County, saying thank you. And anyone that you see, tell them we said thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Williford.
Well, I'd like to start off by also thanking our clerk, Karen Evans. She definitely keeps us all in line and helps me with, I'm an IT idiot. Have no idea how to cut the computer on or off, but she has really worked with me a lot on that, so I appreciate both what she has done and Jessica, and continues to do so. I also was able to attend the Wilton School Leadership Program, and it was absolutely outstanding. What that school has done, what those young, those children did was just absolutely awesome. We were able to stay for the majority of the program, and it was, I too concur with Commissioner May, that'd be a great program to have in every school. I also went to the Butner gazebo. I wound it down to the southern end of the county and crossed over the river, and they didn't run me out, and it was a great, that's going to be a great addition to the community. It was a, a great night, and it was well-attended and very nice. So kudos to Town of Butner. We are, we have three of us on the opioid advisory committee for Granville County. We have upcoming public forums. You're going to be seeing a article in the ledger every week to educate the public about the opioid crisis, and you'll, will be, we have a public forum, I believe Commissioner Gooch is May the 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Senior Center in Oxford. There'll be another one later announced for the Town of Stovall, and I think we had one in Butner last week. Okay, so for those people that would like to attend, I think it's well worth an hour to come out and ask questions and see what, what the opioid advisory committee is doing. The only other thing is I would like to also thank our county manager for the budget, the staff, Karina, the others involved in it, our finance director, Jennifer, and Ms. Monique sitting up there. So it's, a lot of time goes into this. For those that don't realize it, it's a $90 million business and takes a lot of work on the staff and to the clerk and to the county commissioners, and we have, we, we are conscientious, I know a lot of people don't believe it, but we are very wary of how our money is spent in keeping taxes as low as we are able to do and maintain a functioning county. And we will have more. We've had two meet, we have, we've already had meetings, and we'll have several more coming up. So certainly if there's questions, don't hesitate to reach out to any of the county commissioners. I think they all would agree, we'd like to have any input. And again, thank you, Drew. That's all for me tonight. I got a little long-winded, Commissioner, Chairman.
No problem. Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to echo what everybody said about Ms. Karen. She is really a, a rock star. The things she does to keep us all in line and to keep the county going, nobody really understands the, the amount of work she does, and I just want to thank her for that. Thanks also to Drew, Karina, Karen, Jessica, Ms. Baird, for all of their hard work on this budget. This is something that, you know, is very important to all of us. I want to thank all the department heads in the county for all of their hard work. I know it wasn't easy. It isn't easy not to ask for anything extra, but this is an area, this will be my first budget that I, that I helped go through and finalize, and I want you to know that this is something I take very seriously. I will read through this extremely hard and dig through it, because the county doesn't have any money. This is your money, and I want to be as good a steward of your funds as I can be. I think that's why you asked all of us to be here, so we can look after your interests. That being said, I did attend a Wilton School Leadership Program. I don't know why we don't have that program in every school that we have. Every one of those students down there would walk up and speak to you and talk to you and be very eloquent in the way they, they answered and gave presentations to the public. They weren't jittery like most young people are. They, they, they stood out. They're going to be true leaders in that, in our community, and we need to foster that. We need to do a lot more of that in our schools. Our county folks has a lot to be proud of. It's a lot going on, and we need to be proud of it. Go out to the things like the Butner when they had the presentation. Go out and participate in that. You'll get a lot of self-worth and good out of it and experience the, your neighbors in the neighborhood. And lastly, the Granville Spirit Week concluded week before last, and on Friday, we had a cookout for the employees of Granville County, and I just want to personally thank every employee of Granville County. Whatever you do, it's important, and I thank you. And it was an honor for me to be there that day and help serve lunch to you, and I thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just like to echo everybody else's thoughts, especially, thank you, Karen. I've been a little bit out of sorts tonight. Karen has tried to make my job easier, and I try to make it more difficult. So she's, she's put in a new way of me following along on a computer screen, and I'm looking and trying to look at a piece of paper. So she's going to drag me into technology. I might come kicking and screaming, but she's going to drag me into it, and thank you. And Jessica, thank you for helping us put together, or actually putting together this presentation for Karen tonight. And Drew, thank you for your presentation on the budget. I know all of your staff, everybody has worked extremely hard on this. It's a long task, and we're just getting, we're past the halfway point, but we're not there yet, so hopefully we can get there within, by the first meeting in June. I'd like to touch on what Commissioner Griffin said about it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And when we ask, when Drew asks the departments to come up with a 5% cut, he's asking them to save taxpayer dollars. He's not asking them to save county money, he's asking them to save taxpayer dollars. When somebody comes with a $2 million budget request or whatever amount of budget request extra, you're asking the taxpayers to fund that. If we don't have the money already coming in from the taxpayers, that means we have to increase taxes. And, you know, I just don't feel like our taxpayers are ready for increase right now. I know I'm not. So, yeah, we need to stop looking at it as if a department head looks at it as his money or her money, we need to make sure they look at it as this, this is taxpayer funds that we're dealing with, and we want to be, we want to spend them as carefully as we can. And I just want everyone to, to join us in, in taking care of the money. Do what we can to make it go as far as we can, and we're trying our best to take care of our employees. It's not an easy task. We wish we could do more. We, we try to do more. We try to do what we can, but often it's, it's not, it's not good enough. I don't feel it's ever good enough. I think we should, we should fund our employees, is, give them everything they can to be competitive, you know, for our county to be competitive salary-wise and benefit-wise, but unfortunately, we just don't have the funds to do it. So we do what we can when we can, and, but we do try our best to look after our employees. They are our, they're our biggest asset. They're the biggest asset to our county, and we thank each and every one of you. And also, the Spirit Week, that's kind of my favorite thing is, is that, that cookout we have where we serve, the county commissioners serve the employees. I know it's a tiny thing, and a lot of people, it don't mean much, but it means a lot to me to be able to feel like I give back a little something to our, our employees and recognize them and thank them. And with that, I'll shut it down for, for now. Had enough. Had enough. Are there any other matters to come before the board tonight? Are there no other matters coming before the board? I believe we have a, need for a closed session, Attorney Client?
Mr. Chair, could I, could I make one brief comment? I know I promised that I had said what I needed to say tonight, but I did want to note that our new Economic Development Director, Charlotte Duncan, is in the audience tonight. Glad to see her here. She's been on board for all of three days, but already has hit the ground running and doing great work for us.
Thank you. And with that, we entertain, a motion to go in closed session after we took a 10-minute break.
I make a motion we go into closed session.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got a couple. Here, let me speak to Sean a little bit later.